Everybody to Eastundy's regular board meeting dated Monday, May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three at six oh one. Catherine, will you take the roll?
Trustee Mahoney?
Here.
Trustee Coonty?
Present.
Trustee Britton?
Here.
Trustee Saviano?
Here.
Trustee Tribber?
Here.
Trustee Sodder?
Here.
And President Lino?
Here. And if you'll rise with me for the plate.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Well, our first order of business is going to be the administration of the oath of office for trustee Rich Tribber. So Catherine, would you please?
You're welcome. Every family come up if you like. We gotta get the Eastundy. I, Richard W. Tribber the third.
I, Richard W. Tribber the third.
Having been elected to the office of village trustee.
Having now elected the office of village trustee.
In the village of Eastundy.
In the village of Eastundy.
In Cook and Kane counties. State of Illinois.
State of Illinois. State of Illinois.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
The Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of village trustee.
Of the office of village trustee.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
All right. Okay. Welcome aboard.
Willingly this time, right?
Right, right. All right, that's gonna take us to public comment. Is there any in the audience who'd like to address the board on a, an agenda or a non-agenda item? Anybody? Little one? No? Okay, and then it'll take us right to our consent agenda. It's a lot to it, so if we could have a motion for this.
I would actually like to move to remove item F of the consent agenda to the other agenda items so that we can have discussion.
All righty, second. Catherine?
Trustee Tribber?
Yes.
Trustee Sodder?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Coonty?
Yes.
Trustee Britton?
Yes.
And trustee Saviano?
Yes.
Okay, so then on A through E, I'll move to approve the regular village board minute, meeting minutes dated April seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Move to accept the warrants list in the amounts of one hundred and ninety-eight thousand and one dollar and sixty-six cents and two hundred and fourteen thousand, six hundred and twenty-six dollars and sixty-nine cents. I will also move to approve a resolution approving a temporary structured tent apartment for one year at three oh six and three oh eight North River Street, which is Aliano's Restaurant. I will also move to approve a resolution approving the purchase of water softening salt from Compass Minerals at a unit price of one hundred and forty dollars per ton. I will move to approve a resolution authorizing the village administrator to enter into an engineering services agreement with Gerald L. Hines and Associates for the two thousand and twenty-three street improvements project in the amount not to exceed of fifty-five thousand dollars.
I'll second.
Anybody have any questions, comments? No? Catherine?
Trustee Tribber?
Yes.
Trustee Sodder?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Coonty?
Yes.
Trustee Britton?
Yes.
And trustee Saviano?
Yes.
Phil, can I ask you a really quick question on the salt? Did that one hundred and forty dollar a ton represent an increase from, from last year? I mean, I was thinking it was more like eighty-five a ton.
Well, that's the winter salt.
That's the winter salt too. Okay. That's really high. Okay. All right, then this'll take us then to our other agenda items, item A. Well, oh, we're gonna do F? Okay, we'll do F first. All right. So if we could have a motion.
I'll move to approve a resolution authorizing the proposal award of village-owned property located at five two five Main Street to Capri Development LLC.
Second. Okay, discussion.
Erica, would you mind just walking us through this? I, I'm not familiar with the backstory on it, so could we just have that for a little bit?
Sure, so the villa owns the property five twenty-five Main Street. It's been vacant for some time. It hasn't had much interest in moving forward with any kind of development. We were approached by some folks who are here this evening who can answer any questions if it comes to B that are interested in developing a commercial center at the location, retail, restaurant, coffee shop possibly. And so they put in a letter of intent and because the property's in a TIF, we then advertised to the general public if there was any other people who had interest. And after that period of time, I think it was three weeks or a month, there was no other submissions. So the action before us is to award this proposal, which basically would authorize staff to negotiate with the developers a redevelopment agreement.
Okay.
And the redevelopment agreement would outline the terms and conditions of moving forward with a development at the property. And that would come back to the board for approval when it was ready. So today is just the step one of several to get something happening at that site.
Fantastic. Thank you for the clarification.
So since we know that used to house Jim Kelly Ford, which was prior to Spring Hill Ford going down onto Route twenty-five, as I recall, when that building got torn down, I don't know that there was any excavation. Joe, you might remember. Is there an oil tank? Because I think there was one. Do we still know if there's one? Okay. All right, so we'll have to find out about that, but.
The village did do an excavation. They hired for a ground and all the way to the contaminated soil, so we have reports on all that.
Okay.
Great.
Yeah, I think that was in here.
Yeah, it was in the packet.
No, I know it was, but there was a, there was a, it was a tank. I used to work there as a kid. And so I'm just wondering if that had gotten removed because I don't recall when the village, the village paid to tear the building down just because it was unsightly. And I'm not recalling that we did any excavation on it. And so we'll operate to remove the tank, so I don't know if it had gotten taken out or not, so. So there's that. So does anybody have any questions for the petitioner?
No, not at this time.
No? Can we ask, sir, that you may give us an idea of what you're proposing?
Good evening. My name is Paul Colpeck. I represent Mr. Lozara. I thank you for letting me be here tonight. Essentially, we looked at this property. I have represented the developer that we intend on using for a number of years. We submitted his, part of his portfolio locally to show that he obviously could do this deal. One of the concerns we have is, as you mentioned, this is step one of many steps. It was very difficult, almost impossible, to go to somebody ahead of time because we didn't know who had it. So now, assuming this goes forward, we'll start stepping up our due diligence on this while we're negotiating because we feel that we're negotiating in good faith with this. And hopefully we can bring somebody to the table.
Great.
Any questions? Thank you very much for everything. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we're gonna have a beard to lead.
All right, so nothing further? Anybody?
Nope.
Catherine?
Trustee Tribber?
Yes.
Trustee Sodder?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Coonty?
Yes.
Trustee Britton?
Yes.
And trustee Saviano?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. All right, that'll take us to other agenda items, the main gist of the meeting with item A. This will be a discussion of a request from River Street Tavern to use public parking spaces for outdoor dining. So Lauren, would you like to address?
Sure. So we just kind of really like to get one more year of getting those four, those four spots as we did last year with those, you know, the garden planters that we got. It just really would help us get some visibility. We put a lot of money into that. You know, we have them built by hand. We put in the extra electric to put on those lights and we be strong. Those were pretty expensive to get those lights. So we like to get some sort of return on that investment. And we feel that it's well-wooded and it's easy to see from, as we drive it by, so it doesn't cause a problem. And it's only four spots. And considering that the majority of our, you know, if you look at our building footprint, the majority of it is, or fifty-fifty of our footprint is the handicap spots for, you know, benditos, the jiu-jitsu place and the tennis, so. Pretty much.
From my perspective, you know, parking, of course, we all know is at a premium. The, the point that I made last time was that I feared, you know, possibility of other establishments wanting to do the same thing, but the point should be taken and it's not, you know, moral relativism is not to be applied here, but indeed, every other establishment in the downtown has other parking and, or I'm sorry, other dining opportunities. Mockingbird, D.C. Cobb, Diamond Gyms, Handbook Club and so forth. So it's gonna be the board's decision on this one, but for that, for that purpose, I don't, I don't object.
So have, so if we looked at the parking to the side of the building as an option, that's on, on the?
The only problem with that side, by the way, is it's at a pretty good angle, so it'd be kind of hard to have.
My, you know, my concerns are, for one thing, last year, we said it was gonna be the last year. You came a couple of weeks ago and we asked what the neighbors thought and the neighbors have responded that it's problematic. And our police department has concerns as well because of the position on a busy street, so. You know, I, it's like I want to find a way to do outdoor dining, but that's a very difficult spot to do it on.
We've learned in three years not to see one.
Right, because it was a COVID, you know, we, we.
And there wasn't as much downtime traffic during COVID either.
Right, so this is, it's just, it concerns me a lot to have it again this year because we need to support our businesses and I want to support you in some way, but we have to support all the businesses. And we knew last year that your neighbors had an issue. We said one more year and we'll go from there and I just, it's like if we could do it on the side, if we could do it somewhere else, if we could even make something work with the sidewalk there or something, like if there was something to do that didn't have us going back on our word to other businesses in town, I feel better about it.
And I remember too, Dr. Desai was here last year and originally you wanted six spaces correct last year.
Originally we had set out, yeah, we, because we, we set it out first and then we downsized it and I think it was one or six spaces originally.
Yeah, and I remember I, we asked Dr. Desai here if, if reducing the number of spaces would be helpful and he had said yes. I know that you ideally want to do a rooftop thing and I understand what is limiting you with that, but I know other places do have other options and you don't, and so I'm, I'm in favor of another year of it as long as we really try to figure out a better option or another option for next year, even if we have to move the handicap spaces or do something that makes it a little more fair so you have space. I'm okay with another.
Can I, can I ask, Lauren, the two spaces would be on the north side of Jackson, right off the corner off the river. Yeah, it, there is a, an incline going down to the west. Is that an impossibility for you? I mean, it's a little off the door, but what sort of hardship does that pose for you?
Being off the door has that hardship, not being able to, because like right when it's out front, we visually see people on the patio where it won't have any visual of people on patio on that side. So if there was for any sort of incidents that happened, it'd be hard to,
right.
to be on top of it right away and also it'd be a pretty good angle.
Yeah. But the length of two spaces would probably provide ample dining outside rather than four width. Two length would probably, okay.
Like when you were talking about doing, in the, you know, moving the, do you use that, those handicaps because you have those two islands there? That would easily be more consideration for us.
Right.
When you just have to do the handicap slots.
And what sort of problems do that pose? Chief, I mean, we had talked about the possibility of moving those handicap spots on the south len, the south end, further north to the other side. Does that, I mean, it would probably require an ordinance change, I'm sure, but.
Yeah, I think more so Chris could probably more talk to it as far as a building code issue in reference to the relative closeness to the door and also if there's any ramping of the curb there in order to accommodate.
But from a traffic standpoint, it really doesn't come, uh.
From traffic, no, I think our major concern was is that puts people sitting very close to the travel lane and as tight as it is there anyway, and with the volume of traffic we have now compared to during COVID times, it's just, I can't in good conscience, you know, give a recommendation that would, that'd say it was okay.
My, my only concern with the sidewalk there is that any, any path between across Jackson from one side to the other is gonna create the need to go into the lane to get around that if we were to go, so the sidewalk, I'm thinking, would have to remain open, but Chris, what, what do you think on that? The idea of moving the, the handicap spots north?
The existing sidewalk and ramps to the north are not ADA compliant. They're too steep. So that would take a.
Oh, they are.
Pay it to be ripped out and redesigned and it's, it's gonna be an expensive proposition.
So where the, the, the two spots on the south end of that like lane of parking, the sidewalk in front of it's relatively flat, but on the far north end, it's angled? Because I know like right in front of the door, it's.
It's stepped up.
It's steep, yeah, it is.
So, yeah, so it's, it's a lot steeper at the north end than it is where the handicap ramp comes in off the sidewalk on the south end.
Well, creating that kind of a problem doesn't really solve anything.
No.
Having the handicap spots there, but then making, you know, ingress, egress a challenge. Okay, thanks, Chris.
How many months is it?
It's almost seven days, so it's October.
October.
Four months?
Yeah. It certainly does accentuate the need for more parking. Catherine, do you have anything?
No, I, I'm not really. I, I don't want to have this conversation next year is all. If we approve this this year, I don't want to have this conversation next year. Don't, don't bother, you know, if you can't figure out the rooftop, and I don't mean to be, it, it's, it's just, I mean, we just had a crazy election that all it was talking about was parking, 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 and so for us as a board to go back and go, okay, yeah, we'll give you four parking spots and put on our other businesses. I, I, and again, I want to see you succeed and if it, if having this extra seating outside is gonna help you make the profits that you need so that you can afford to do the rooftop next year or to do part of it, you know, so be it, but it's, it's really, it's.
Balancing act.
It's a really tough balancing act and, and the, and the safety is of concern too. Now, don't you have an upstairs as well? Above the bar area?
Yeah.
Is that open usually or?
We do a lot of private functions up there.
Yeah.
We have private functions.
Would you consider opening it up for other seating beyond private functions?
If, if we have, if we have the need for it, yeah.
If you have the need for it?
Mayor, if I may?
Please.
I also would recommend that if the board were in time to go forward with this, that the patron or the business name the village as an additional insured under a policy of insurance because it's using public space and if there were an injury.
Yeah, we did that last year too.
Yeah. Okay. All right, again, that would be good. Scotty, Rich, David?
I mean, Lauren, I, I think what you guys made last year was, looked really nice. Fortunately, you know, your neighbors are speaking out against it. Police department's speaking out against it. I can't, I can't say yes to it again. I'm sorry. How far are, how far out are you on development of a rooftop?
So, so I'm building this for sale right now. And the process of something approaching the building would be a huge kind of aspect of it to me, but I don't want to go out there and put the money out to build a rooftop for somebody else.
Right.
We have, I think there's two letters attached on the rooftop. Possibly now a third we had a pretty good showing. Half an hour ago. So, you know, that would be something that would be a separate idea.
Lauren, was that the entire building or just your unit?
Just the restaurant, yeah.
Just the restaurant piece, okay. Yeah.
Oh, that, that was a whole nother.
No, no, I was just wondering.
Complexity to the story and then understand, helpful to understand that, Lauren.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, if it was gonna be the whole thing, we don't know if there would be a tenant change or not, so who knows?
Yeah.
Andy, do you have anything?
Yeah, I'm kind of in the same spot as Scott. Like I do love the outdoor dining and want to find another spot for it just because of the safety concerns and more so because two out of three neighbors are complaining and we assured them that this would be the only year last year, so I would feel bad changing it on them. But yeah, probably have to vote no on using those spots in the same way. But would love if that side area or the roof or behind or some other spot we could turn into outdoor patio seating.
Well, the side parking spaces were gonna be considered. That represents a difficulty from a security standpoint, like you had mentioned. If you can't keep a hundred percent sight of it, short of putting somebody out there all the time, we run the risk of somebody getting up and walking away with a container that because there's a, a sight impediment with the wall, you wouldn't know unless like say you had a head count out there all the time policing it, so I don't know if that would necessarily. So I think I create more problems than it solves, so.
I feel like it's similar at Emmett's, like they have that outdoor and nobody's out there most of the time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So they could maybe pull it off. I mean, it's not.
Well, they got this, yeah, it's sidewalk though, it's partitioned, but still, we don't, we don't have that, so.
It's still, there's, I mean, it's the same issue with line of sight, so. They, they, at Emmett's, they have the same line of sight issue. I mean, it's, it might be their sidewalk instead, but it's still line of sight.
It is, but Emmett's has got side windows and they got a door that goes up to that area, so, but, you know, I mean, if.
That sounds like it's maybe not an option.
Door there would probably change things, so. Okay, so well, this was the discussion, so.
It would be helpful if we could get maybe a straw pole. I'm not, it seems like we're split and I'm not really sure what direction to take this at this point, so. If you would be inclined to call for that, that would be.
Yeah, I'll call for a straw pole just to kind of get an idea of where we stand. Andy?
Uh, no.
Okay, Rich?
Yes.
Yes, Rich?
Yeah.
Hey, Scott? No, it's two, two. Catherine?
No.
No? And Sarah?
No. Ugh, no. If it could be moved, if it.
Not the way it's currently proposed.
Yeah. If, if it was fewer spot, like we, I just.
We can continue discussions.
This is hard.
We can do some further research and see if we can come up with anything else, but.
Yeah. Because I understand, like, the need for outdoor space in the summer is huge. I get it. I get it. I love your place. Like, it's not personal. It's just other businesses and it's parking and it's a busy street and it's not COVID anymore and it's, there's so much going into it that I just.
Right.
Not a, not as proposed. I guess it's.
Lauren, can you give us a little more time on it? Okay, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
We'll definitely be in touch.
Sorry.
You have that done with us?
Okay.
Get the baby.
Sweet dog.
That'll take us to item B, if I could have a motion. Continue the discussion.
I'll make a motion to approve an ordinance amending various sections of the village of Eastundy Village Code regarding live entertainment.
I'll second.
Just give an overview of this issue, so.
I did the second.
Yeah, yeah, we got, it's like three people.
That nobody's.
It's hard to hear.
All right, so this issue came up a little bit last summer with outdoor entertainment. And, you know, we've been trying to look at ways to address the issue. Of course, our overarching tool is our noise ordinance, which lays out what kinds of sounds can be allowed. But the situation as it currently exists could use a little bit more finesse. And so we went to the Planning and Zoning Commission and asked for them to discuss the issue and come forward with a recommendation. And we gave some, you know, baseline suggestions and P and Z talked it, talked it over for two separate meetings and came forward with what's in the packet tonight for a suggestion for the board to consider, which would be to have this new definition created in the code for, I think it's.
Tavern?
Yeah, it's tavern with live entertainment.
Tavern with live entertainment. And then we would move forward with, if this was approved, we would move forward with working with individual businesses to have them submit for special use permits that would then come back to the board for approval, which would give us sort of a second layer of enforcement tool, but, you know, a clarification of what's, what's acceptable, what's not acceptable, and then, you know, tools for us to use to further work with businesses if, you know, to, to set guidelines for what, what we want to see.
Can I ask a few clarifying questions?
Yes.
On behalf of our local business community, I'm assuming that this will not have a significant impact on the two thousand and twenty-three season since most places have probably booked that out already.
Imagine by the time we work with all of them and get them through the process, the summer will be close to over, so.
It would take that long?
I mean, the, the special use permits have to go to P and Z first.
Yep.
So.
Some of them have been submitted yet or issued.
Right, so we would have to have them all submit the applications, go to P and Z, go to the village board.
Right.
So I, it's not a speedy process.
And we're going to possibly not charge existing businesses because of this is a new thing and/or hasn't been enforced, so we're going to grandfather them in for the special permit?
I mean, I don't know if there's, is there a charge for the special use?
Yes.
The fee usually goes to publication.
Yeah. I would recommend that we wouldn't for this specific instance.
Okay. And then, sorry. This is specifically defining live entertainment. This is not actually setting the language of the special use? Is that correct?
That's how I understand it. Kelly can clarify, but.
It creates a special use in the districts where there's really no use or no guidelines already permitted. So the special use comes when the applicant actually applies.
Right.
The special use and then you'd see that back here once P and Z approves it.
So the language of the special use, because of course we want to have one blanket special use that applies to everybody for consistency. So that, the language of the actual special use will be next.
It sounds like, yes, but it also sounds like you might be, maybe making a statement of some kind of recommendation to what you would like to see coming through.
I'm not gonna do that right now. I just want to make sure that what we're talking about today is not the language of the special use.
Especially it comes for the individual applicant.
So can I ask what added control this has given us? Because what we've got is noise ordinance that really is at the crux of the whole matter. That doesn't change or certainly shouldn't. What does requiring a petitioner to go through a special use permit process get us?
It's a great question. What it gives you is the, you have to look at it in terms of the impact to the community. So what does allowing this use impact? And what safeguards can the village or P and Z recommend against those negative impacts? So for instance, what you might often see in special use permits is, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna allow this, but we want to make sure that there's no queuing outside of. but we want to make sure that there's no queuing outside of people standing in line, you know, at midnight, one o'clock in the morning, creating more noise for the neighbors. Or we want to see, because this is creating an impact of more crowds, we want to see that you, you know, maybe add on a couple additional parking spaces. Or perhaps you want to see, um, the business be responsible for collecting all litter outside at the, at the close of night so that people who are leaving with their cigarettes or whatever aren't creating trash in the neighborhood. So, really, the special use creates conditions upon which the business is allowed to use it, and it creates, um, conditions that help alleviate the negative impacts in the neighborhood.
Yeah, and for a specific example that makes it a little bit more crystallized, the noise ordinance would allow any business to have a band seven days a week for the entire summer. So, if we don't think that that's a great thing for the neighborhood, we can say, you should only be allowed to do concerts outside four days a week, or three days a week, or six days a week. Gives you a little bit more control to decide per location what makes the most sense for the adjacent neighbors.
So, can we talk about what led up to this? Because I know that we've had a few complaints about one place, which that one place, I guess, would be DC Cops. That was in the, when this first came before plead P and Z, there were letters of complaint from several businesses about DC Cops.
But the crux, I'm sorry to interrupt. The crux of this was Rose's last year with the residents coming in saying.
Okay, so the Rosie's thing was a one-time thing that they've never done before.
No, it wasn't, it wasn't the special event, it was the Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday night upper concerts.
They got, you know.
Yeah, it wasn't the, it wasn't the.
It wasn't that one concert they did. So, they're doing their concerts on the patio and that's annoying.
It's, I mean, I think that there is a, there's a balance, there's a delicate balance. I think that many folks enjoy the ability to go down the street and see live music, but at, at what point is it too much versus just right?
Yeah. Okay, so we're trying to create a mechanism by which we can govern that a little bit more. So, if I, if I open a restaurant downtown and I apply for a, uh, I don't apply for a special use permit because restaurants are allowed downtown, uh, but then two years later I want live music, then I have to come through and ask for this special permit. Why wouldn't we just make a permit that businesses have to apply to anytime they want to use, want to have live music?
You mean, like a license?
An event.
Yeah, like an event license or a.
Like, for every individual performance?
Isn't that what this is?
That would be a ton of licenses throughout the summer. Every, every place, I mean, every place I know of has live music Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. That's four separate licenses for one week.
Right, but what we're saying here, though, is once we give them the special permit, they can do what they want.
Mm-hmm.
And really, I guess, again, what Jeff was saying, what recourse do we have to correct them, should they?
Yeah, I'll tell you.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so if you violate a permit, you can go back before P and Z for finding that the permit's violated and it can be revoked. The license, it's a whole other process, it's a lot more complicated.
Okay, so this would be simplified, then, is what you're suggesting, okay.
Yes.
So, there's the control.
Correct, you're saying we want, you know, we want these uses, we like these uses, but as Erica pointed out, we want some safeguards on the disturbance to the neighbors. There's a balance, right?
So, then we're going to go to all of our current businesses and say they have to apply for this special permit that they've never had before, going to make it easy for them. But we're still going to have the opportunity to talk to each and every one of them about how they intend to have their performances, and we can set restrictions on each and every one of them special to them.
So, when they go to planning and zoning for the view of the special use before it comes to the board, planning and zoning will get an understanding of the use that they're proposing or, or doing, and they will make recommendations about any conditions that might be added to the special use permit.
Yeah.
Say, like, no Monday night, or no music after ten, or, you know, something like that.
Yeah.
Um, and then those would be dr, written into the draft special use permit that the board would then consider and either affirm or even add to what P and Z recommends.
Okay, and this is, this live entertainment, it doesn't matter if it's indoor or outdoor. This is just blanket live entertainment for indoor and or outdoor live entertainment.
Correct.
Okay.
Which is less of a noise issue and more of a safety issue, like fire codes. How many people do you have in there when you also have a band, having cords taped down, like space, things like that? Those are the things especially for, like, indoor music to think about with a special use, but for outdoors, more, you know. Is it seven days a week, is it five days a week, is it, it's still cords taped down, it's still things like that, but it's also hours and stuff like that.
Okay.
So, this is really about adding this in and then also the specific definition of live entertainment.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Um, so, in looking at that, um, yeah, if, if. I, is, is there, I see that you're trying to differentiate between background and ambient, ambient music that necessarily might not be additionally amplified.
Right.
Um, and, you know, is there, is there a way to kind of, whereas, um, live entertainment is generally more amplified, um, music, and it can be acoustic music, it can be a, you know, that's still amplified beyond just them performing, so I'm just questioning whether or not that would be a way to add a little bit more definition into, um, into this.
Yeah, I had the same note, because the way it reads right now, piano player, harpist, strolling violinist, traditional jukebox, karaoke, or guitarist, which, how many places just have somebody playing a guitar? But they're amped, they're hooked up, and that's where.
The noise comes in.
The noise comes in. So, can we perhaps add something about amplification to the definition?
Shall consist of live?
To make it clearer that that is what we're, because if somebody to do is walking around with an unamped guitar, cool, but that's not what we're talking about really with this.
So, to that degree, um, shall consist of live music, dancing, and or singing performances, floor shows, DJ shows, and other amplified entertainment performances?
I like, that seems, right?
So.
And we should, so amplified and then maybe unamplified, so.
Mm-hmm.
Sorry, can you repeat that again?
Okay, in the second, um, in the second line of the definition, directly before entertainment performances, just insert amplified entertainment performances, does that make sense? And then, putting in the, um, ambient incidental background music. Um, right now, you've also got a guitarist in here, so, and strolling, so it would be more acoustic. You know, how do we put that in there to differentiate between the ambient or just background music and live performance?
Yeah, maybe it's guests or patrons by musicians such as unamplified background music piano player. Does that make any sense? Okay, I got ahead now, I'm excited.
In those situations, though, does the noise ordinances levels change, correct? For that?
The nor, yeah, the, that.
That control level?
You know, and the noise ordinance is difficult because it has to be within so many feet, so many decibels and it's measured. I think with an unamplified, probably be all right.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Unless we're talking about, I don't, I don't know what could make so much noise if it was unamplified, and maybe like a keyboard, electronic keyboard, maybe, but.
Right.
We'll cross that bridge if we get to it.
Yeah, I, I'm just thinking ahead that somebody might hold us to one ordinance and, and when they're in violation of another and saying, well, you know, I'm perfectly within my rights because I fulfill or I'm adhering to this one, but inadvertently they're violating another and I'm just want to make sure that we don't.
Yeah, I, unless you understand, I think you could still be in violation of the noise ordinance, even if you were granted a special use.
Mm-hmm, oh, absolutely, there you go. What's the fee again for special use?
I don't know. They would be a qualification chart, it's, so. Fifty bucks.
Hundred fifty?
Per year or just one time?
And gratification.
And applications are not. And applications are not annual, they are a one-time thing, thank you. And that would really just apply to new businesses, it's not for existing businesses, because we're going to, this time around. So, we'll open it up then.
So, we're not going to all our.
No, exact, that's exactly what I don't want to happen. Yeah.
And are we making it, uh, with this line about religious with live entertainment is special use? Are we making churches apply for special use to have worship music? Or are they in a different category and this doesn't apply to them?
It's a different category.
Different category.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think some of this is that we've had this on the books, we just haven't enforced it.
Sorry.
Yeah, you guys are not creating a special use tonight. This has always been in place. Over the years, somehow, the businesses did not come before the board for a special use permit. All we're doing is cleaning up the definition of live entertainment and how to get them into compliance with the existing special use. What you are adding is brew pubs with live entertainment or taverns with live entertainment. Restaurants with live entertainment has always been here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
But not as a special use permit? No, it's a special use. Really?
We just don't have anybody actually doing it.
So, does, nobody has that special permit, though? Is what you're saying?
Stay over there.
Yeah, we can't find any. The restaurants that opened, that came before operating in special use.
DC Cops, for instance, no, they don't have that.
Should have.
You could sit down now.
We'll call you back up as soon as you sit down.
Uh, so this is something that gives us more control, like, right now, we could put a bunch of blanket rules on live entertainment for a bar as a primary use, but then if they violate it, we can't really do anything where spe, special use makes it, so you could take it away, is that part of it?
Actually, in my opinion, the way you have it right now, if you were to do nothing tonight, creates a difficult position for both your businesses and the village, because the only option the village would have would be to shut the business down and say you don't have a special use for this, um, or bring them up, you know, to administrative hearings for violating the zoning ordinance and finding people, and that's not, I don't think that's a great option. No.
Well, I guess, that, that would, that would spawn another question, though. If, if a restaurant with live music, if they have a, a special permit for a restaurant with live music, and we say, you've been abusing the live music portion of this permit, uh, you can't have live music anymore, are they going to lose their restaurant permit as well at the same time, then? Or, or would we be able to just shut down live music as an extension of that?
So, if you have a business that's operating without, outside of zoning and they get a violation, code violation, theoretically, you can move to revoke their business license, but, you know, we'd have to look at it on a case-by-case basis.
Right, but what I'm saying is, what I'm trying to say is, we can use as deterrent the threat of not allowing them to use live music anymore or for a period of time, suspending the, uh, special use of having live music. Would that also suspend their entire permit and they would not be able to operate their restaurant?
No, they can operate their restaurant, they just wouldn't be able to have.
Gotcha, that's what I wanted to make sure, all right, good.
Yeah, those need to be separate things, that's agreed.
So, they have primary and they have a special use on top of it?
Yeah, the special use gets created with the live entertainment.
Okay.
Right.
If they're just a restaurant with no live entertainment, then they're just a permitted use.
Oh, I see this, yeah, okay.
And that doesn't even come before zoning or you all.
Right.
Okay.
Need the motion to.
Okay.
If you're seeking to amend what's written, then yes.
I would, I would do that, okay.
And there any other comments or questions?
Um, there were some recommendations, uh, from the police department about the hours for the noise ordinance. Um, is that a discussion for another time? Uh, because it did seem like there were some noise ordinances that said midnight, some said 11:00 PM, and we are wanting to push it towards 11:00 PM, and then Friday and Saturday, having that, but maybe an earlier time on weekday nights, is that something we can work into this? Or is that a separate vote?
Well, I think twofold, there may be a change to the noise ordinance if the board feels that there should be, but each business that comes through now that has this live entertainment would have to go through planning and zoning, and planning and zoning may recommend, as Village Manager Storyly said, to limit the hours of operation on the music. So, maybe cut it off at 10:00 or 11:00. The noise ordinance would still apply if people were standing outside yelling and screaming, for instance.
Mm-hmm.
Chief?
If I could make a recommendation, too, based on this, because I think this, this will help us significantly, is, one is, is that because we don't have a definition of what live music is, per se, is that we've, you know, in consultation with Chris, when we've talked about and had issues elsewhere, is whether or not a DJ was considered live entertainment, it really wasn't. We considered live entertainment actual instrumentation. So, this will help us out significantly in a couple different venues where we've had this issue. Uh, the other is, is that if we're able to employ the use of the special use permit, is like one particular establishment, we have issues because they have outdoor amplification that when they're having an event inside, continue to, to broadcast externally, which is what the neighbors and the adjoining businesses have the biggest concern about. So, whether or not the special use thing can say, the outdoor speakers have to get shut off by X, nine o'clock, 10 o'clock, whatever it is, that will significantly help, you know, the, I, I think the, the quality of life in the entire neighborhood at that point, too, so I think that gives us another tool as well.
Good, so we can tie it to that, absolutely.
So, maybe the next step is whatever we clean up on the noise ordinance is just a general rule, but then our first special use, defining a template, basically, and then it could be tweaked per location if there's location-specific difficulties.
Yeah, so, Andy, you're talking about just having like a baseline.
Like the conditions.
Conditions.
Yeah, like, like I think Sarah was saying, so, we don't want completely different rules for every bar and then, well, you gave them this and why don't we get that? But, um, starting with, here's the intention, is everybody has this rule, uh, same for everyone, but since you're in this particular spot that doesn't have room for sound baffling, maybe you just put this in place and that helps, or whatever kind of rules we come up with, maybe they're challenging for some bars.
We can, yeah, because that, that gives us the base. I like, I like a template that can be adjusted, you know, as opposed to everybody gets their own set of rules.
I know we tried to discuss the idea of redirecting some of the noise, specifically Diamond Gyms, towards the downtown and away from the neighbors to the west. Um, barring that, do we need to review our decimal maximums on the noise ordinance? I mean, I'm not, I.
My staff tells me that when we were employing that for that particular establishment is that it was very effective and that, and that the system worked with what the lows levels were at that time. But you, but you're correct, uh, as far as the baffling issue, and that's something that we have brought up and kind of discussed in our, our memo as well, as, as far as being able to redirect some of that sound if it's protruding into a residential neighborhood.
Because I don't, I can't imagine for specifically at Diamond Gyms that it would be that difficult. You know, it's not, I mean, just to put up some sort of higher fence, if you will, and to just kind of curb it off that corner there, the, the northwest corner, it didn't seem all that complicated, so. Okay, um.
Okay, so we're, so. Okay, so we're okay to move forward with the amended language of the definition of live entertainment?
Well, are we in a motion?
Yeah, we'll need a motion and a second on the amendment.
Right.
And then...
So what is the amendment we want to make again? I didn't hear.
I wrote it down. I can try to read it for everybody if that's helpful. So it's to live, it's to the definition of live entertainment. What I heard was, shall consist of live music, dancing and/or singing performances, floor shows, DJ shows, and other amplified entertainment performances, whether or not an admission fee is charged. Live entertainment shall not include subtle ambient or incidental background music provided for guests or patrons by musicians such as unamplified background music, piano player, harpist, strolling violin, violinist, et cetera, et cetera. So those are the two changes, was amplified and unamplified. Those words would be it.
Okay. Alright. So we need a motion for that or we just amend our initial motion?
You can do either. So we can...
I'll make a motion to approve an ordinance amending various sections of the East Dundee Village Code regarding live entertainment with the changes and amendments just read in by the village attorney.
Second.
Discussion.
Trusty Tribber?
Yes.
Trusty Sodder?
Yes.
Trusty Mahoney?
Yes.
Trusty Coonty?
Yes.
Trusty Britton?
Yes.
And Trusty Saviano?
Yes.
Was the motion to approve the ordinance as amended?
Yes.
Okay, right, we're good.
Okay, that'll take us to item C. We could have a motion.
I will make a motion to approve an ordinance amending various sections of the Village of East Dundee Village Code regarding banquet halls.
Second. Okay. This one, just, I'll start off the conversation with it. Gave me pause simply because what the P and Z had suggested for both this one and the one prior seemed to contradict the two. When, with regard to the clubs, halls, lodges and so forth, we were allowing permit by right on the, on the event facilities, the banquet halls, but special use on the other. So... It's all special use.
It's all special use.
Well, no, if you take a look, I mean, the way it was, the table was written out, and banquet halls, we're looking at...
Us.
What I'm just concerned about is if somebody could call into question one or the other, and so, you know, it's like, well, wait a minute. You know, I'm really not a banquet hall. I'm a restaurant with live entertainment. Or I'm really not a restaurant here. I'm a banquet hall. If it doesn't, if it's not a big deal, you know, or if it's not a concern or... Well, it's all special.
It's just, it's a special use permit.
No.
Yeah.
Did you look? I did. I did. And that's why I'm raising the question.
And also changing the definition of what a banquet hall is.
Well, not banquet halls, but what I'm saying, okay, here where we talked about, okay, clubs, lodges, meeting halls, and we talked about the other one, it says clubs, lodge, meeting halls, the indications were different. Well, it is different because this is in M1. And that is actually a good point. On M1 and M2, we have live, restaurant with live entertainment as permitted. We should change that to special use if we're going to have that as special use.
I thought it was in the previous one.
Yeah, we just did that.
Yeah, that's the existing, sorry.
Yeah.
That's just the existing table.
Right. So I guess what we're trying to say is that hopefully that this won't get pasted in after that one gets pasted in and resets it back. Well, right, or someone may call it into question. It's all on the menu.
Yeah.
But I'm going to be the definition queen tonight. I think what's also, the big gist of this is also changing the definition, which, of what a banquet hall is, which means it's hosting private events that are also pre-planned and they're not just somebody dropping in off the street and prepaid for. So it's something that's, you know, much more planned out. It's, and it's, you know...
It's the difference between a night club and a banquet hall. One is pre-planned and one is...
Right. Yeah.
Exactly.
We're having a party tonight. Yeah, I don't think the way it's written, we're necessarily going to get inundated with banquet halls or anything like that, but we might also consider establishing a separate, or a new license for, or do we have one for banquet halls?
As we do.
I don't know.
We do.
We do.
Because we've got the two that cater that in, so they don't really even have a license necessarily for liquor, other than just to bring that in as a catered service. So...
Hey Erica, can you give a, we didn't really ask for a preview on this one. Can we get a preview from you or Franco on...
So I'll give you a brief overview. So we have an existing, an existing, well, as you can see, we have three banquet halls currently in existence, operating in the village, with varying levels of compliance to the current zoning code.
Which is?
Which is problematic.
Which is a special use?
Well, at the top of the memo, one of them was approved as a special use. Another one was approved, but not with a special use. I mean, it's just, it's really quirky. But really, the crux of why this came forward was that we have a business owner who's interested in putting a banquet hall in the M1 manufacturing district. So when staff discussed this, the particular location that's being suggested is, you know, in the middle of a business park with a large truck parking facility. So it seemed not quite to fit. And so when this issue went to P and Z to say, should we have banquet facilities in M1 or M2, staff's recommendation was, no, we would not suggest that you allow it in M1. But P and Z had a different take on it and they recommended that it should be allowed in M1 or M2. If it's a special use, there's always that latitude that the board can decide if it wants to allow it or not. If it were to come forward and staff can make an additional recommendation at that time based on the circumstances and whether or not it seems to be a good fit or not based on whatever is being proposed. But that's really why it came forward, because there's a person who wants to put one in, in a place where it's not currently allowed. So if this ordinance is approved, that person will be able to open a banquet hall in, or will be able to apply to open a banquet hall in the M1, and that would go to P and Z and then, and then back to the board. But right now, that's not even a possibility because it's not allowed. So...
And what is the difference between M1 and M2?
I don't know. Anybody know?
Not much. I think that, I think the M2 was created to allow for adult uses way back when you had a zoning district to allow that.
Ah, yeah, I think I talked with our staff about whether or not we still had to have that and if we could remove it, if it was no longer required that we have it.
But that was geographically restricted too, wasn't it?
Right, there's only two parcels that are already involved. And that was done on purpose at that time.
So I guess from my perspective, I would agree with the P and Z that banquet halls would be appropriate in M1. A lot of these old, you know, and we don't really have that. We don't really have an old factory other than Hager. And Hager's not going to be a banquet hall. But a lot of these old factories do get converted into banquet halls, which we might not have that opportunity in East Dundee, but it does suggest that a banquet hall can survive in an M1, you know, setting. So I guess I would agree with them that that's...
While also knowing that hotels are allowed in M1.
And restaurants.
It's like, we allow everything else, and if you're going to allow a hotel, they often come with a banquet facility. So you can't say yes to one and block the other, you know? Like that's...
What are we blocking?
Like if we, if we said yes to hotels and blocked banquets from the same district, that's a little wonky for someone who wants to build a hotel there. But I do like that it's special use, so you have to apply. And you, it says in here that we'll be bringing any of the existing sites, similar to with live music, we'll be bringing existing, unapplied for banquets up to this. Okay, great. Any issues with the definition of banquet hall? Bernie?
I'm happy schmordish for it.
Is that on your list of words?
That didn't even last.
Before we move past the special use for permitted, is it best practice to have somewhere that it is permitted? Or kind of like marijuana dispensaries, there was a rush to like have permitted areas so that you can't say no to a banquet hall. It does seem like a banquet hall, the ones that we have, we've had some issues with sound being near residential, that it's almost in some ways better to be in the M1 because there's not residents that are going to be upset. But it might be a dumb question, but is it best practice to have P in one of those squares? Or is it fine to just do special use everywhere?
P is just indicates...
Permitting.
Permit by right and that they don't have to come down to that.
Yeah, there's not, there's not a rule that says you have to have a permitted use anywhere for a banquet hall. Cannabis is totally different. So there's nothing wrong with just creating it as a special use.
Just to give us the flexibility. Okay.
I don't have a problem with the definition.
Yeah.
Neither.
Okay. Anything else?
Call a question?
And we're going to make 611, Gallery 611, come for us for a special use permit? Or are we going to just give them the special use permit? What are we going to do?
We will follow the process, but we will not require them to come to the meeting or pay a fee.
Same old certainty?
Sounds good.
We're going to have one. So what about COVID?
There you have it.
Okay. Anything else? Kathy?
Trusty Tribber?
Yes.
Trusty Sodder?
Yes.
Trusty Mahoney?
Yes.
Trusty Coonty?
Yes.
Trusty Britton?
Yes.
Trusty Saviano?
Yes.
Okay, that'll take us to item D if we could have a motion. I'll make a motion to approve an ordinance implementing an updated personnel manual for the Village of East Dundee.
Second. It's been a long time coming.
It is. Can I ask, with this one, did we have counsel, review this?
Yeah, so Brandis has taken the lead on putting this forward since, basically, I started. So it's been an undertaking over the last 18 months and it's been with a lot of input from the department heads and staff. So it's been quite the process. And it, you know, every time you bring up one thing, it leads to another. And so it wasn't super succinct. It was really thoughtful and laborious. So we did have our labor council weigh in on it. There's several provisions that were edited based on that feedback. We have one provision that still needs to be updated for placebo ordinance that you might see at our meeting next week, next month. But we kept saying, if we keep, if we keep waiting and do the one next thing, we're never going to get this forward. And we're like, we just had to have a cutoff date and say, okay, that we're bringing it forward. There's always going to be something to update. When updates are made, we'll notify staff and we'll explain the update. But right now, what we have is largely complete and pretty solid. So we're very happy to be bringing it forward. And we'll, if it's approved tonight, we'll distribute it to our staff and we will have them all sign off that they have received it and understand that the provisions in it are, they are to be bound by and that when we make future updates, they'll be notified. And yeah, we're excited to put it in place.
Recognizing Brandis's efforts, I mean, fact is, we don't know what we don't know. And not being an expert in that field, in the event that we find something that's either contradictory or not included that should be, we can amend this as we go, right? Something because we've gotten, we stepped our toe really bad about a year and a half ago with something that was called a question that was either omitted or not included in the prior version. We don't know what else should necessarily be in there. So there are, I know consultants that do this, put these things together along with laws and union contracts and so forth. So as long as all those things are recognized, and we can amend this as we go.
Yeah, it's common for personnel manuals to evolve. Like you said, laws change or sometimes in practice, staff finds this doesn't quite work for us, this isn't quite fit. So personnel manuals get amended.
And there's language specifically to that in the manual. I did actually have a question about that language in the manual. It, because as you said, staff should be notified if something changes. But the language itself does not require that. It actually says, except for the foregoing policy on at-will employment, the provisions of this personnel manual may, in the discretion of the village, be modified, revoked, or changed at any time with or without notice. And I would really like to see that without notice go away because I think it's imperative that staff is notified if there's a change to the manual. I think it should be required.
Well, I think what the intent of that language is that if you said only with notice, then staff's, let's say there, something became illegal in here, then they couldn't change it unless they essentially had to sign off from all the staff. So I think you'd want the flexibility on some level to have that change made and then notify after the fact.
I just don't want to run into a situation where we change after the fact, where something happened that we don't like. So we change the manual without notifying, and then we say, oh, look, it was in the manual, which I understand was never going to happen. But I don't like the...
Your manual gets posted on the website, right? So you can post changes as they occur on the website. Staff can get ahold of that.
Okay.
Also, not having read through all the pages of it, I read through quite a bit of it, but I'm concerned about any situations that might be handled differently from a representative employee to a non, or compared to a non-representative employee.
You mean like for a union or not?
Yeah.
Well, collective bargaining has their own set of rules you have to follow.
But I mean, if there's a situation that would be applied differently to a union, a representative employee compared to what the village handles for a non-represented, would that create?
There would be, but it's not in the way that you're thinking. So for an exempt employee who's non-union, the procedure for discipline is, is just by its nature different than the procedure for a union collective bargaining employee. The procedures are different and that's, that's been bargained for by contract. That's standard. Yeah.
All right. I just, I'm just concerned about the treatment of one employee compared to another or something because they're represented and the other isn't. I mean, would the village handle the similar situation two different ways or be forced to?
Yes, but not because we're trying, the village is trying to be, treat people differently on its face. It's just because there's a bargain for a way to handle union issues versus exempt issues.
All right. Well, would that be grounds for legal action?
No.
Okay. All right. Is there any other questions, comments?
So what, so I just would like a little bit more, sorry, I'm grumpy about this little section and I know we need to leave it, but so is it just we'll notify our employees that at any time the manual's available online and we will provide notice every time they, every time it's updated?
So what I understood from what Kelly was saying was the notice is not notification.
Right.
Notice is different than notification. So if a state law changes regarding sexual harassment, we have to update the manual. We can't go to the employees ahead of time and say, are you okay with this?
Right. Yes.
That's notice. Notification is...
We update the manual.
We updated the manual. It says that this policy is now this. We updated the manual. It says that this policy is now this and we're notifying you of it.
Okay.
So maybe we can just add a sentence that says when substantive changes are made to the manual, employees will be notified.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
I'll add that.
Would we be able to get a redline version of the old?
Well, we, we wholesale scrapped the old one.
Which makes sense.
It probably was necessary.
And then it just, it became.
A lot red?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. I read the old one recently, about a year ago or so. And, um, yeah, this is completely different.
Alrighty.
An item, it's an embarrassment to even say that it's.
Yeah, it was pretty obvious.
It's the same document.
The other questions?
Not a, not a change, but the table of contents has a lot of errors for page numbers, but I'm sure they'll catch that in the end, but just to point it out.
We'll repd F it before we send it out to make sure that those are fixed.
Sometimes a PDF and a PDF.
Yeah.
Go scary.
Okay.
No others, yeah.
Okay, sorry. Catherine?
Trustee Tribber?
Yes.
Trustee Soder?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Kuntzey?
Yes.
Trustee Britton?
Yes.
And Trustee Savian?
Yes.
Okay, our last item then is a discussion and consideration of potential consolidation of existing committees. So what's the impetus for this? Can I ask?
So we have some committees on the books that haven't met in seven years in some cases. And so this was something that we wanted to get feedback on and see if there's a desire to consolidate. Basically just the, we're just talking about the
Seven?
The seven, uh, community events, finance, general village, public safety, streets, utility, and committee of the whole, the rest of them. We make no recommendations on because they think they're functioning quite well.
They also have like, uh, auditors that are attached.
Separate.
So.
Yeah.
Beetle, rammy, rambling.
Yeah. So Catherine was nice enough to look up when all of these last met and it was the finance committee that hasn't met since 2013, so that was ten years.
Public safety met in 2010?
Yeah, and so that should have, finance should have been, because at one point it was like, the committee of the whole is the finance committee. Because we don't wanna be ma, nobody gets off. On budget and all that kinda stuff.
Part in that.
So. That should have been kind of.
And our, since then too, our finance involvement with, from a committee standpoint, has been mainly budget. So during the budget season, we would all get together, hammer out, throw everything into the mix and then sort it out. And that was our finance involvement with that committee, so. The idea is moving, uh, what, the streets and utilities maybe together or public safety?
Public safety hasn't met since 2010.
We, we gave a couple of options, one of which would be to keep committee of the whole, and community events as separate. And then combine all four of the remainder into general village, which refinance public safety, streets, and utility. I think that probably makes the most sense, but if there was a desire to keep a couple more of those individual committees, we could do the, the other option above that, which would just combine streets and utility into one.
When's the last time utility met? Do they meet more regularly?
You don't really get a whole lot of.
I think they met once in maybe the past three years.
Okay.
Did meet last year to talk about the changes to the water.
Yes, that's what it was.
Okay.
So, yeah, I, I, I mean, basically if, if we did my suggestion would have been to do the events and the general village together as combined. Because we've had some overlapping issues with community events and some of the stuff with the depot and that kinda thing. Which fell under general village. Um, and then everything else go into the committee of the whole. Or general village, whichever way you want, but.
There, there's a lot, well. I guess there's quite a bit, um, for community events, I mean, we have had some overlap with the general village, but I do think that.
Broaden the community events.
Yeah, like, do we wanna, do we wanna keep a community events that's really just for community events and then put the broader scope with every, with the other, with, I don't know. I don't know if I'm, I just think I'm just babbling at this point, so.
I, I would think too, maybe finance should remain separate. Simply because it gives everybody a say in that where if you're not part of it, I mean, otherwise everyone's gonna be part of general village then. If it goes, uh, finance, public safety, utilities, and streets all in one, then everyone is gonna be on that committee in seems. But if.
I feel like we should be.
What's that?
I think, I feel like we should be.
Right, so do I, but, um, but if finance being separate, I think we'll committee the whole.
Finance is already under committee of the whole.
Well, it's structured that way, but.
Yeah, so let's, let's really structure it that way.
We can discuss other things that the committee of the whole is.
Right.
With finance, it's structured simply because we've got the entire board as part of the finance committee, so it's structured similar to the committee of the whole.
But we don't, I mean, we don't have a finance committee meeting. We have, we talk about finance during.
The committee.
Committee meeting, or the committee of the whole meetings, like that's, there's no separate finance meeting, so why do we need a separate finance committee?
Well, that's my point. Finance is an important aspect of running the government and for the village. You know, mixing it with, with other issues and topics can muddy it up.
So we just strike it from general village, cross out finance, 'cause it's already in committee of the whole.
So we just no longer have a finance committee? We have it as part of what we do as general village business?
Is finance. Is there two separate topics we would hit?
Which would lead me to ask the question, basically everything, finance, public safety, streets, and utilities is a function of committee of the whole. So would we just hold them all under committee of the?
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, that's how the board wants to do it.
Okay with that?
Yeah.
Simplify?
Yeah, so, and just a reminder, committee of the whole meetings can never make any actions. It's all just discussions.
None of these committees can make any.
Right.
Right.
Yeah. But in the past, not, the whole board wasn't there, so it was a point, so.
So do we still want a general village?
Doesn't seem to make sense.
For other, like what is?
Well, it was just kind of a, all other.
Yeah, I think it's committee events and depot grounds. You know, kinda thing.
Sense of the committee.
Community, because it's so tied in.
Right.
Yeah, I think we can strike it.
You could eliminate it if you want and then just put it in with the committee of the whole, but.
Do we wanna include, Kathleen just mentioned, do we wanna include like the depot as part of the community events? Like inhabit?
Yeah.
Events and the depot.
It seems to make sense.
Tied in so closely, yeah.
It's like events.
So expanding community events.
Yeah.
Yeah.
To tie in like the depot.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, and then everything goes out, else goes in the community, committee of the whole?
Yep.
Okay, we can do that. Cool. All right.
Is there anything else then on that? No? All right, we'll go to reports. Erica, you wanna start us?
Sure, so just looking ahead to the meeting schedule, we do not have enough agenda items for a meeting on June third, I think it is. So our next meeting will be June twenty sixth.
Okay, wait, what? Next month's meetings. June. Our next meeting, where our meeting is gonna be June twenty sixth?
Yeah, so our, our regularly scheduled next meeting is in two weeks on June fifth.
Oh, June fifth.
But we do not have any agenda items. Our, our next regular board meeting would be June nineteenth, which is federal and state holiday, Juneteenth. So our alternate date for our second meeting in June is June twenty sixth. So.
Or not want, what about? Could have the week before. If we wanted.
If we wanted to meet on June twelfth, yes.
Do you want June twelfth? In place of our committee of the whole meeting?
Cause you brought it up, we're gonna have both. No, I have no preference. If you wanna do the twelfth or the twenty sixth, if we do the twenty sixth, the, the, the idea was that there's some things coming out of P and Z that we would have time to get on for the twenty sixth. I don't know that we'd be able to turn it around for the twelfth.
Do you know what those are?
There's a, an application for a biochar facility and a business park, which you'll find out soon. It's a way of recycling materials, uh, using combustion. It's fascinating. I really mean that authentically.
Okay.
And there's a subdivision application, but I'm not sure if that will get through P and Z in one meeting or not. Or a, a P U D, which includes a subdivision.
So. What are we on to?
Twelfth or the twenty sixth.
Twelfth or the twenty sixth.
I guess the twenty sixth.
What do you think?
Well, I mean, we have like Water Street coming back for some information or something, cause then another month. And, um, we're discussing stuff, or I don't know, I'm just.
Well, if we discuss that, we can have, well, we have a committee of the whole. The twenty sixth is more than a month away.
Well, and the week after it, there's a meeting as well, so it'd be like two and.
No, that's the third of July.
Oh, that one got bumped.
You're for the twelfth? I would say we should meet on the twelfth. Personally, we could also meet on the twenty sixth if.
I mean, we could meet on the fifth and the twenty sixth too, like the only reason, oh, because of the, the only reason we're not meeting on the fifth is because we might not have agenda items, but we have, if we do have agenda items, we could just keep the meeting we have. Right?
On the fifth?
On the fifth. Like if we're, if we're going to have agenda items on the twelfth, could we possibly have them on the fifth? I guess is my question.
The agenda items on the twelfth, I think what I'm hearing is that they would be possibly the ones from the special, from the P and Z.
No, that's the twenty sixth.
Well, what I was saying was.
I'm sorry. Let's just talk over you right now.
I'm kidding.
June fifth, we don't have any agenda items. So I'm not sure meeting a week later will cause us to have agenda items. When there is no agenda items for the fifth, so another five days.
However, there's a P Z H C meeting on the eighth.
First.
On the first.
Yes.
That you'd like to have the time to be able to prepare for us, but you don't think you'd have it ready by the twelfth.
Right.
So what if we say the twenty sixth, if things come up and we do fit as planned, if anything's. It's good compromise.
Yeah, we'll just, we'll hold the fifth if, you can always tell us the date before.
Pencil it in very lightly.
Unlikely, but possible.
I'll be ready for both.
Yes.
Kelly will be here even if we're not.
Yeah, she'll just sit there by herself. So we're just keeping June fifth and saying, we're likely to cancel, but.
Yes.
We'll hold.
Sounds good.
And then the twenty sixth is the other one?
Yes.
Okay.
Anything else?
That'll be all, thank you.
Kathleen?
Some stuff that's been coming up on, on next door is solicitors and people come to your door. And, um, I believe we have solicitor requirements. And if we can publish those requirements or some recommendations from the police department on how to handle solicitors. Or because of people that have bad intent.
Policy that they had to get a, a badge or something.
Just very quickly, I think the village attorney and I are gonna take a look at our current ordinance, cause there's been a lot of changes in case law over the last several years. And what the village can actually require and what they aren't able to anymore. Especially when it comes to somebody coming to your door, if they're not soliciting for money or something, but they're, you know.
Speech related.
Yeah, correct, you know.
Yeah.
It's, it's the Watchtower case, that's what, probably fifteen, twenty years old now. You know, where the, the people can come to your door and proselytize and you can't really stop them. And then the issue of signage and no solicitors allowed and, you know, and stuff like that. So we have to take a look and see what's, what's still valid or what may need to be changed.
Okay, that'd be great. Yeah, appreciate that. The next thing is the summer event season kicked off on Saturday with the first depot market. And I know in the past, we haven't been doing many announcements on our weekly or on our Facebook page regarding the depot market because it was covered and promoted by the township. But as we are now involved in it, I would like to have that added. And to kind of our promotion of that. I think the vendor participation was pretty good for such a cloudy and cold day, but, um, and for the first day, it was light on customers and that's why I'm trying to, but we also had threatening weather. So I'm just trying to make sure that, um, we're transitioning fully in our communications, marketing, and pulling that in. And then, and I know I owe you some sign designs for, for that, or Catherine. For that. And then I also participated in the shredding event this weekend, and so I, I, does that fall under your purview, Phil?
Well, he staffed it.
Right. So I'd love. Okay. You know, just love in your reports to have any, um, feedback on how that went and how many people participated, that kinda thing. That's it.
We didn't make top cars, but we did have, we collected, um, there were cars up until the volume went close.
We, I think we slid right in. Sent my husband back home.
King County had a big one on Randall Road there the week prior. I'm just thinking, might interfere, what are you gonna do? Sarah?
Uh, a few things. I'm calling to Kathleen this evening. What? So, uh, I've had a, I've had a comment slash request, our Barrington Avenue property that is pretty gross looking right now because we've got the RFP and all that stuff on it. I know we don't wanna spend a ton of money or time on it, but it is, could we throw some grass seed out or something just to make it look a little bit less unsightly while we're working through this? Again, I'll go out there with seed bags if I have to, but it's looking pretty gnarly out there, so.
We have talked about doing that.
Okay, cool.
Kind of maybe to see what type of development.
Yeah.
Maybe it may not happen sooner than later or.
Yeah, that makes sense.
We'll take care of it. It's, we took it down because it was unsightly. We don't wanna leave it unsightly.
Right. Appreciate that. The spray. Sorry.
Oh, yeah.
The spray is happening Wednesday, for everybody who doesn't know this yet.
I was just gonna call it the spongy moth treatment.
The treatment, I'm sorry, the treatment. It is happening during hours that are less than ideal. I understand that that is because we are using a place that is fantastic and the state also uses, so we're sort of relegated to less than ideal hours. Have we, is there any way to tell people like, yes, your area's done? Or can we message out day of, things like that? Like, we're now sort of in prime morning hours, kids are gonna be getting on buses, people are gonna be leaving for work, everybody's waking up, all of that. So I just, it's, it's now less easy.
Talked to the, the flying service at length about that exact issue and a couple of things, um, they're gonna start right around six o'clock. So daybreak is when they're gonna begin the spray operation. They're gonna stage, um, their helicopter at the dead end of Christina next to Cat, Caterpillar. So they'll, they'll fly the helicopter here to East Dundee and they'll, they'll have another crew that will drive, um, the product. And so they'll load the, the BTK product, um, at the Caterpillar, essentially at the Christina drive location. And so they'll begin spraying right about six o'clock and they should be done two and a half, three hours at the most.
Okay.
He's anticipating.
And so they'll begin spraying right about six o'clock, and it should be done two and a half, three hours at the most, he's anticipating. The helicopter will be accompanied by an airplane.
Okay.
Which will fly about a thousand feet above ground, and that will contain a crew of two. And essentially, they're a lookout for the helicopter, so what their, their objective is to, um, whatever their flight plan will ultimately be. The airplane will communicate, it can be the eyes, so to speak, the spotter for the helicopter, the spraying crew. So if they see a group of people, or if they see something that causes them concern, uh, they will communicate with the helicopter, the spraying crew. To avoid something or to make an adjustment to, to the flight plan.
Okay.
So kids at bus stops, the manual Lutheran starting.
People walking dogs, going to work on schools, talked about all that, and, and most people will hear it, it's not, they're using a turbine engine on the helicopter. So it'll be quieter than it sounds, but it'll still be audible to the general public. And their flight, the helicopter flight will be about thirty to fifty feet above the tree line, so.
They'll see it.
They'll see it, they'll hear it, uh, but their objective obviously is to, um, and they'll be moving relatively quickly throughout the community. So it's hard to communicate with them to say, okay, they're done here, and, um.
Yeah, I was just thinking, over the course of two and a half to three hours, we could say like, okay, this whole chunk is like, you know, every thirty minutes during that timeframe. Or even every hour, you could let folks know, but, you know, I get it.
We, we can certainly do that, once they're done flying, for example, south of, I'm not sure what their program is, but it could be, I could request some type of communication. And we would have to coordinate something on our end, whether it's.
Even if it's just like post on Facebook, or post, you know, if there's some way to let people know, easy. I don't need this to be like, we need a whole website, we're doing a whole map update and all that, but if, I'm like, I don't care, call me, I'll post on my Facebook page. Like I just, like, if there's a way to get that information out.
Let me see about what level of communication I can have.
This is possible, you know.
Cause I think the, the flight crew will have to radio it on to the ground crew, or the airplane crew, and then back to me, and then.
Yeah.
It's a whomever we.
I don't need to add like twenty-five layers of complexity, but if there's only three layers, that would be.
If we could look into that, sure, see what we can do there.
Thank you, sorry. Thank you. Um, and the last question I had is Jeff, uh, plan and zoning, June?
Yes, hopefully I've got three people on the line that I've already communicated with that have yet to get back to me, also one on police commission as well.
Okay, cool.
So, um, we got notice that Joe Peña has resigned, actually, well, his term is up at the end of April. But he and his family are moving to Florida, so now we do have, uh, two spots. And, uh, so I've got one on the hook, one on the hook, one person that's very interested in it, and another one has yet to get back to me on that, so.
Okay.
I do have, uh, three people.
So, so June for fixing that, that would be great.
That would be it.
Um, and we'll have plan and zoning come, kind of re, re-agree to participate and do the training and all that good stuff, so. Great, that's it.
Is it, okay, Kelly?
No report.
No, okay, Chris?
No report.
Okay, I see we have the fire department here tonight, was there anything you wanted to show with the board at all?
No.
No, okay, Joe, anything?
No report.
Chief?
Couple of quick things, one is Friday is cop on the rooftop, a donkey donuts are special. Come on by, donkey donuts.
I don't want to. Sounds good, good.
So we'll be there for that, and just, uh, I'm very happy that, uh, our first sergeant has graduated from the school crew staff. And Sergeant Ritter, right before I left, I invited him to go out of town. And from my knowledge, he's the first one to have graduated since, coincidentally, Chief Peña and I graduated together in ninety-three. Alright, so, so I'm, uh, very excited about that, and our second sergeant is slated to go in October.
Congratulations.
They're slowly marching along with our supervisors.
Good enough, good enough, thank you. Phil?
No report, just the first ring, as I mentioned.
Okay, got you, alright.
Somebody beat you to it.
I mean, yeah, that's what I'm here for.
Andy, what you got?
Uh, arts council update, we do have, um, a potential start date of July fifth, and then potentially ending July eleventh for the mural. That's going to be painted on the, uh, Spirit Hardwood Building. Uh, weather dependent, it could change a bit, but, um, we have an updated sketch and, um, dates and things figured out with the owner. Another arts council update is that we do need to, I sent you an email, I don't know if you got it, we do have, we have that opening. Somebody, uh, stepped down, but we do have two people who just, uh, since it's staggered every year. I'm actually up as well as Jacqueline Marhaus, so I've reached out to her to see if she's interested in re-upping. I'd be willing to, but we do have, uh, three spots that we need to officially update.
And I've got someone else, too, who actually expressed an interest in that, so there's a couple handles I need to clear up with that person, or that they need to clear up, so we'll be in touch.
But yeah, let us know if you need us to recruit or find anyone.
Also, too, on the, on the mural, did we get ahold of the, um, we got to talk to, about covering up those windows before she gets going on that.
Yeah, she's going to cover. Like, the left window will be covered with actual plywood, the, the building owner is going to cover that. The other is going to be glass, but you can paint glass, um, and if it deteriorates, we can always scrape it off or reapply it. But it's worth painting and having it up and see if it lasts a few years, uh, if not, worst case scenario.
They're going to use plywood, I would suggest, that pressure treat it simply because it'll.
Right.
Hold up better in the outdoors.
He's got his building guy doing it, so they should know how to. Pick the right, it won't be the artist, um, doing that part. And he's, he's pretty invested in making sure it doesn't fall apart, so.
Chris, can you come up with, you have any ideas what we could use in lieu of plywood? Wood is not going to paint well, it just doesn't, it'll hold up for a little while, I don't want to spend thirteen thousand dollars on a mural that'll fade me here.
Typically, for signage, they use marine plywood.
Okay.
Which is specifically designed to be a little more weather resistant.
Okay, but that's not something you can get at Home Depot, is it?
Uh, the sign companies typically have it available, or they can get it.
Okay.
At least they used to be, maybe they've switched everything to plastic now, uh, vinyl, because a lot of it's just laminated on top and not painted anymore. But how, they can maybe check with the sign company, see if there's an other.
Alright, so will the, and the artist will know whether or not it needs to be primed first?
The artist has, is so knowledgeable in all that, and the sealant and what, what to use and everything, that was part of our whole interview, I suppose.
Yeah, you're vetting.
Why wouldn't we cover both windows?
He doesn't want to because of the glass and how, like, the, the look of the other one, he just would like them to paint on the glass.
Is that it?
Uh, one more, oh, just a, uh, thank you to Elrod and Friedman for putting on an event, the training for, um, a few of us were there, and a lot of helpful information, so. Recommend it if you haven't checked it out before.
You have to wait another two years.
Two years.
Yeah. Missed it. Uh, that's all.
Okay, Chris?
No report.
Rich?
No report.
Scott?
Uh, well, I did drop off a check at the Dundee Historical Society last Monday, everybody elated to get that. Thank you, Mandy, for recommending that. Also, uh, I was just wondering, are we considered, are we registered as a Tree City, Tree City USA?
Yes, we are.
We have been, are we now?
I think we just were approved in twenty twenty-two for being a best rural area.
Okay, so we don't advertise that anywhere.
I mentioned in my bi-weeklies, we do have two signs up, there's one sign on Van Buren, and maybe one on Alton Avenue, so we have each.
Never noticed it, I live on Van Buren.
Is there, is there one on Barrington, I think, at the top of the hill?
We're going to follow, I think we have two, I thought, and we put them up loud, but we have to remember where.
You should probably change that sign.
It's one over, over near me somewhere, can't remember which street.
We could change it to treated Tree City.
And they, they send us a sticker every year that says, for your flyers, and I think we just got a flyer here, so we should. Oh, yes, we are, we are, yeah, we give those a flag, too.
You know, we have those nice wood signs at the entrance of the village, that might be a good place to come.
Oh, you just brought up a whole can of worms with that, didn't you?
There's a couple that we need to just.
Now they've got the personality.
You're like, it'd only take me eighteen months for this.
Alright, that's all, thank you.
That'll be easy.
Yeah.
The only thing I have is I got a, a thank you card from the historical society that Scott mentioned, Collette McDonald, who's the secretary. Very appreciative of the help, um, and then also to Elrod and Friedman, we went to that, and it was a real informative, uh, tutorial on a lot of interesting topics, so. The one Greg Smith gave, actually Greg Smith, by the way, who was with Klein Door, is now with Elrod and Friedman. On the land usage was a, was a real informative one, that, uh, was one I was interested in, so, appreciate that, so, that's all I have, so. Okay, uh, with that, I guess we're going to go into an executive session, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn into that.
What are the reasons?
Which things?
It's C eleven and C five.
Eleven and five. I will move to.
Wait, wait, and C six?
Eleven and five.
Okay.
Is it eleven and five?
Oh, sorry, sorry, C six.
C five and C six.
C six, yes.
Five and six.
Five and six, yes.
I will move to close this meeting to public and media under provisions of the Illinois Open Meetings Act, five I L C S, one twenty slash two. C five, acquisition of property, and C six, sale of property. Uh, and we will adjourn from our executive session, not returning to public session.
Second.
Catherine? Trusty Tribber?
Yes.
Trusty Satter?
Yes.
Trusty Mahoney?
Yes.
Trusty Coonsey?
Yes.
Trusty Britton?
Yes.
Trusty Saviano?
Yes.
And President Lyneum?
Yes, okay, well, thank you all for coming, and we'll.